Commission meeting. Our first order of business is roll call. So I will call and if you can just say aye, that would be great. Commissioner Lutz. Can he hear me?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Clunner.
Here.
Commissioner Lindberg.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Stewart.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Now we can. Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez. Commissioner Schrock. And Commissioner Norman, which we know will not be in attendance this evening. So we'll just make note that Commissioner Salas Ramirez, Commissioner Schrock, Commissioner Norman are not present at this time. If that changes, we'll go ahead and update the minutes. Did all of the commissioners have an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting? If so, did you see any changes that needed to be made?
No.
No.
Not, and I will move to approve the minutes.
And I'll second.
Okay, was that Commissioner Clunner that made a motion to approve?
Lutz.
Lutz, okay. And who made that second?
Commissioner Lindberg.
Okay. A motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz, seconded by Commissioner Lindberg to approve the minutes from our last meeting. I'll go ahead and we'll do a vote. Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows.
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Our first public open hearing this evening is to consider a petition for Gregory Hovland at 838th Avenue Northeast for a variance from City Code Section 11.01 subdivision 1, limiting the total aggregate area of all the accessory structures to 1,584 square feet for properties over one acre in an R1 residential district. Holly, if you can.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Hovland is here, if you have any questions for him. His property is located at 838th Avenue Northeast in Austin. He, his property is zoned, as noted, single-family residential and is over one acre. The petitioner has requested a 1,246 square foot variance from our city code, which limits accessory structures in a parcel over one acre to 1,584 square feet. The request is for a construction of a shed 2,400 square feet, basically 60 by 40. The property in question actually is 1.4 acres, which is fairly large for the city. Our minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. With this proposed addition, the total lot coverage with structures would be approximately 8% of his parcel, 40% lot coverage is the maximum allowed. His current dwelling is about 2,000 square feet, just a little over. He has an existing detached garage that's 430 square feet. And then he has a proposed shed of 2,400 square feet. There is an aerial here where he shows a couple of, is there two other? Actually, I'll just look on the map here, or aerial. These two structures where my cursor is located will be removed. So those are not part of the equation.
So Holly, can I ask a question here? When you go back to that aerial.
Yep.
Is the 40-foot parcel and the 66 and a half-foot parcel part of his property?
Yeah, let me go, let me see, I'll share different. I'll go to the, actually, let's see, I just need to exit out of this one, I think. I'm trying, trying to remember how I need to get to my. There we go, close that. Shoot. I had this up earlier, but I must have closed it. So this will show better, it's more current. So he has combined all of the parcels. So on this current GIS map, this shows the actual property that he has to work with. The aerial that we had was prior to the property combination, or the parcels being combined. If that helps.
Holly, we can't see.
Oh, am I not, oh, okay, hang on. Here we go. All right, is that better?
Yes, much better.
Yeah, so this property here with where my cursor is, this is the entire property. Again, showing the parcels combined. And then if we zoom out, so you can see there's some larger, you know, in this neighborhood, it's not uncommon to see some of the larger accessory structures.
Yep.
They're just kind of not, not real unusual in this area. Let's see, I will go back to. There we go. All right, so this is a request for a variance. So the standard for a variance is that it is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code, that the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, and that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the provision, that the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, that the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located, that the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. I would recommend taking into consideration whether the proposed structures and character with this residential neighborhood, and then the, I guess, the reasoning of the property owner isn't entirely relevant, but it is for additional storage space. Do you have any questions relevant to the standard of review?
You know, I'm looking at this in terms of whether or not it's keeping with harmony. Do we know what kind of building materials are going to be used? Is this a pole barn? Is it going to be like a traditional garage? All I see is reference to a shed.
Yep, I'll have Mr. Hovland describe the type of structure that he's proposing. He hasn't settled on a specific design, but he has a type of structure in mind. So yeah, I'll let him go ahead and describe that. If you can go up to the podium and then just give your address and your name.
Greg Hovland, 838th Avenue Northeast. The structure is really similar to, let's say, a pole shed like that other structures that are in the neighborhood. So steel vertical siding with steel roofing, similar to like you would see in the rest of the, let's say, so to speak sheds in the neighborhood that they're in that area. I mean, there's, there's a neighbor on either side of me that have similar structures. And I think the most recent one was probably a few years ago, three, four years ago, I guess. The other thing that's nice about the property that I purchased, the other half acre that was combined, there's already, let's say, an in-drive there and a culvert already set up for that because the person that I purchased for was planning to put a road into that development behind me. So he had a, like a 67-foot section that he had planned to put a road in there, but there was already, there was already a culvert and a, let's say, a semi-in-drive there already. It's probably hard to see in the map there, but it's to the top left there, yeah, in that area. So that would be the plan to have an entrance in that area. I guess it's one more over, Holly, there you go.
Oh yeah, you're over here with the, yeah. Yeah, it's not easy to see, but, so the location would be in this area. I think you included that with the materials.
Correct.
Or the application, I should say.
Does anyone else have any questions for the petitioner?
None for me.
Have you gotten any feedback from any of the neighbors?
Uh, no. No, we didn't get any calls or any kind of communication from any of the neighbors.
I'd be quite surprised if there were, because like Holly mentioned earlier, most of the properties have some sort of a shed on them, as you can see in the, what's on the screen now.
If we don't have any other further questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second. Is this a recommendation or is this a straight up?
This is a recommendation to the city council, so they will make a final decision, taking into account your recommendation and the materials provided, and that will be on Tuesday 18th. Monday's a holiday, so it's on Tuesday. I think you had a.
Yeah, we did, we had a motion, but we just had a motion to approve. Did you want to complete the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the council, to the council, that we approve this variance.
Okay. A motion's been made and by Commissioner Lindberg and seconded by Commissioner Clunner to recommend to council the approval of the variance. We'll go ahead and we'll do a vote. Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows.
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our next open public hearing is to accept input text amendments to numerous chapters and sections of the city code. Holly, I will have you go ahead and take the lead.
Yeah, I have the link up. I do have the link up here, but I will allow, Eric, you can take over, but we have with us our consultant, our representative, who is our team lead on this project, helping us wrap it up. And he'll give you a little bit of our back, of the background. We were primarily looking at, I mean, from the time that we adopted our 2016 comprehensive plan, was recommended that we update our zoning code. We had changed some of the definitions of some of our districts in our future land use plan, and we want our current zoning plan to, our current zoning ordinance to reflect those changes, so we don't have any conflict there. And then also, we've had over the years, you know, a number of items that keep coming up that could use some improvement. And then we also have some areas that are very out of date, or code primarily being adopted in the mid-'70s. Mr. Weber is, and you can, I guess, describe your position and title, and I'll just hand it over to Eric.
Thank you, Holly. Holly, can you give me the ability to share my screen? And while Holly is doing that, I'm Eric Weber. I am a senior planner for a consulting firm called WSB. We've done a number of zoning updates in the metropolitan area, conducting many since those communities had to adopt their comprehensive plan in 2018. So I have a presentation I can give if Holly was able to allow me to share my screen.
It should be set up for anyone to share.
Okay, I got it now, thank you.
Yeah, I need a, I need a little warm-up myself.
Let's see, can everybody see my screen that's kind of a orange slide? All right, thank you. So a little bit of timeline, as Holly stated.
Eric, I don't think we're seeing your slide, I don't think we're seeing your share. I'm going to stop mine, there we go, that's what the problem was.
Okay, are we good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. So the timeline, so when the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2016, Holly worked with city staff and the city council to prepare an RFP to get the zoning code updated. WSB was selected in September of 2019. Early, or late in 2019, we had a joint meeting, a different staff member from WSB had a joint meeting with Planning Commission of the City Council, and kind of right before COVID, we had a couple pop-up engagement activities at the library. So since that time, for about 18 months, we were working mostly with Holly to go through various drafts of the code after those were prepared. In early November, we had both presentation to the Austin Area Chamber of Commerce, and we also uploaded the code to the project website for people to be able to review. Today, we are asking for the Planning Commission to both hold the public hearing and to make a recommendation to the city council. Anticipation of that recommendation would be that this would move to the January 18th city council meeting, in which if that was adopted, there is a little bit of lag time for the code to be published and then in effect. So a couple of the reasons or purposes we had for updating the Unified Development Code was, again, to implement the 2016 comprehensive plan. And then you'll see, I'm, we're calling this the Unified Development Code because it actually combines Chapter 11 zoning and Chapter 13 subdivision. So the intention is to put all the development-related regulations in one place, making it easier for residents and developers to review the code and the regulations. As Holly stated, due to the age of the code, there were quite a few state regulations that have been updated or revised, and so we addressed those changes. Again, trying to simplify the development process, address community preferences and aesthetics, specifically things that were identified during our public engagement activities. And then the whole purpose of the zoning ordinance is to reduce the impacts from certain uses that could cause impacts to its neighbors, as well as anticipating growth in future city state. So kind of, this is what's called a discretionary pyramid, but it's items in gray in the bottom, the city has the most flexibility in adopting its regulations. Once these regulations are adopted, the areas in orange, the variances, plats, conditional use permits are things that, they are items that will need public hearings, but if they meet the codes, they generally are adopted. And then the areas in kind of light pink at the top are things that are often done administratively, meaning Holly and her fellow staff members can issue those permits if they meet not only the code, but any requirements that may have been provided in the variances, plats, or conditional use permits. So we're at that second to the bottom portion of this pyramid. The city has the most flexibility in creating the rules at this stage, but once they are created, then applicants are expected to be granted a permit if they meet these requirements. So there are seven sections and one appendix to this document, and I won't go over all seven sections here because that's, that's the following seven slides, but here is the zoning map that will implement the code by assigning each piece of a property its specific zone. So the first element of the code is the general provisions. This has a lot to do with how the city has the authority to actually implement a zoning ordinance, so talking about the authority from the state, purpose statements and relationship with the comprehensive plan, kind of giving the overarching goals and legislation to make that work. Other kinds of things that if there were inconsistencies, the text prevails over graphics, I won't go through each one of the next, but it's really the standards of how to interpret the other section of the code. So the second section, you know, really relates to that zoning map. It talks about the different types of zoning districts, which are generally various residential, business and industrial zoning districts, but then there is also an agricultural and conservation district, and then there is the possibility of getting a planned unit development, which would allow for kind of creating your own zoning district if the development is unique enough to warrant that. Describing the relationship between zoning map and those zoning districts, how to interpret the boundaries, and then talking about regulations within those zoning districts, specifically lot sizes, setbacks, heights, lot coverage, and the like. So here is the specific zones that would be included in the residential business and industrial. You see there are four residential zones, which are essentially the same ones that exist today. R1, predominantly single-family, R2, predominantly multifamily. There is the RO, which is a mix of either multifamily or office, generally surrounding the downtown area, and then the RM, which is a manufactured home district. For the business districts, there currently are three, there's B1 district, B2, and B3. Looking at the code, there were very few differences between the B1 and B2 district, and then in addition to that, looking at the map, there, there wasn't really a difference between where our, excuse me, B1 and B2 were located. So we are actually recommending to get rid of the B1 district. What that, what results from that is there are only 14 properties in the city that are zoned B1. The bulk of them, of those 14 properties are actually only under eight different ownerships. The bulk of the properties, seven of them are recommended to be rezoned from B1 to B2. There is one property that is a single-family use, that one property is supposed to go from B1 to R1. And then there's a number of properties that are owned and adjacent to the Mayo Clinic, and those are proposed to go from B1 to R2, because the bulk of the clinic is already zoned R2. Letters were sent out to those eight property owners of tonight's meeting and next week's meeting with the city council, directing them to the project website if they wish to get further information. And then the three industrial districts are the same three industrial districts, I1, I2, and I3 that exist today. So one of the things we did to simplify thing was to combine uses into a single table. So this is easier for residents or business owners to look at what kind of use they're looking for, and then within the city, which zoning districts would allow those uses. When it's listed as a P, it's permitted use, when it's listed as a C, it's a conditional use. In addition to this matrix, this chapter has specific standards for a number of uses, including those listed there, specifically, you know, important things like auto-related uses, how to deal with drive-throughs, home occupations, and the like. So the next chapter is specific development standards, and these could have to do with things that are within zoning districts, or they could have to do with environmental issues like wetlands or shoreline. So there are three district-specific standards. The first is the B3 district. What's listed in this chapter is actually kind of an attempt at almost a form-based code. It's a lot of diagrams of what is expected in development or redevelopment in the central business district. There's also specific standards about how a manufactured home park would operate, and then finally, a lot of updates due to state standard, or state changes to the shoreline ordinance. Then there's also a set of general standards for nuisances, fences, structures, and then, like I said, there's a number of other standards that are more specific to environmental features that might exist on a lot, regardless of what zoning district. So one of the big components to, to the Unified Development Code is merging the subdivision ordinance with the zoning ordinance, so combining how to create lots with what uses could go on those lots. There are some things that are pretty consistent with the current code, preliminary plats, final plats. There are standards about minimum improvements. When a plat occurs, what kind of improvement need to come with that? Could also be, how are they funded through park dedication or infrastructure fees? And then finally, a couple of alternatives for small subdivisions, subdivisions that are generally less than five lots, that they could either be administrative lot splits generally less than five lots, uh that they could either be administrative lot splits, which are generally uh things where it just changes the lot lines, but it doesn't create new buildable lots, and as is stated there, being administrative, they could be approved by uh city staff alone. And then minor subdivisions, which would require Planning Commission and City Council approval, uh but might have lesser standards to the type of park dedication or infrastructure that's involved, particularly if these are a minor subdivision that's on the road that already has the street and utilities that exist. Then, uh, second to last is the administration of procedures. So, this is kind of the rules of how different applications that come through, how, how they'd be reviewed. Uh, so, what are uh Holly's responsibilities as the zoning administrator? How to address uh non-conformings, and I call out those uh s- subbullets because a particular item could be uh non-conforming in one to three different ways. Could be a non-conforming use, it could be a non-conforming structure, it could be a non-conforming lot, or it could be a combination of all those, and you address those non-conformities maybe in a different way. And then finally, uh things like conditional use permits, what's their process if somebody appealed? Um, uh, Holly's determination, how that could happen through the Board of Appeal and Justments, uh zoning amendments, which are, could be either map amendments, uh rezone a property, or to change text of the zoning code itself. And then finally, how to address uh a unique development that might request a planned unit development. So, the final element of the code is actually uh creating definitions. Uh, your current code has some definitions, but this was one area that Holly and myself wrote, spent a lot of time, uh trying to make sure that we're putting as many definitions in as possible, and as you can see on the image on the right, is actually trying to add graphics that help people understand uh what these terms mean. And so, finally, uh, the zoning map, this is the existing zoning map, so you can see there is the B1, uh it exists today, but um this is what will be rezoned. I wanted to highlight it because uh even at this scale, it's going to be hard to tell, but there's a couple of properties that are uh B1 right over here, a couple of properties down in this area, the Casey's um gas station is another one. Um, there's one right over here, uh just the east of, of the plant, and then a number of properties kind of uh just north of the central business district. So, they would become the, the B2, uh kind of the same as the rest of the, on this area, on this map. So, uh, you know, we've been trying to get the word out that this uh is happening, so uh including uh both the public hearing notice and um the letters to the eight specific property owners of where they can go to uh see the code amendment that included that meeting with uh the area Chamber of Commerce, and then uh directing that people could either contact myself or Holly with any comments. And with that, I would uh stand for any questions that the Funding Commission may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. This is Commissioner Lutz. Eric, I was wondering if you could explain, just give us a little more detail on the memorandum on the second page, the last couple of bullet points as far as administrative actions. I'm not sure I understand what we're saying there, and I couldn't find any language in in the code text to explain that. I wonder if you could expand on that a little bit. What exactly are we talking about there?
All right, um, let's see if I can share that screen correctly. Do you see the first page of the memorandum? So, uh, sorry, Commissioner Luth, can you help me which bullet specifically where you're referring to? Lutz? Uh, you're muted, sorry.
Okay, the first one is create an administrative lot split process.
Sure.
And the one after that, create a minor subdivision process.
Okay, let's see how good I can get to getting this, but this is in the uh subdivision ordinance. I'll, I'll generally describe them, uh and then I'll try to get to the pages specifically. Uh, so, um.
Hey, Eric, before you get started.
There's a slight differ. Yes.
Um, I was just gonna say that our commissioners probably haven't seen those. Um, we've taken those directly to council for the minor subdivisions. Um, so.
Oh.
You know, whatever process we develop or have, you know, adopted in this zoning update would be, you know, new to them for sure.
Correct, correct. The, the purpose is um, the state statute defines a plat differently than a subdivision. A subdivision is any uh change in the legal description to create a lot that, that is independent, buildable. A plat is what is five lots or more, and uh the code requires that the Planning Commission review and approve plats. Uh, the state statute does as well. The state statute does not require four or less lots to go to the Planning Commission, and so that's why there is the administrative lap uh split process and the minor subdivision process. Um, the administrative lot split um uh allows lots that have previously been planted to be subdivided further into up to three lots, provided meets all other requirements of the code. So, that um submitted to Holly, reviewed by the city administrator, um basically just uh give information to the county recorder, and those could move forward, you know. So, being a lot that already was part of a plat, the streets, the subdivision, the park dedication, all that, uh could have been addressed at that time. A minor subdivision is different, uh it's uh no more than five lots, but uh this may be where there isn't currently a street, and so a street may need to be created, uh but um less infrastructure required than a, than a subdivision itself. So, that's um uh the, what we um revisited and revamped uh as a part of, of this code. So, let's see, I wonder if, I didn't let me do it.
So, like the lot combination that uh Mr. Um, Hovland did, where he purchased the adjacent lot, that would be like something that would be perfect for an administrative uh lot split or combination?
So, in the, the PDF of the um, the Unified Development Code that was provided, the administrative lot split is on page uh ninety-five. Um, you know, talks about what qualifies, um, needs to be only parcels that are part of an existing plat, uh creates no more than three new uh properties, uh that the parcels shall all have the minimum for ordinance required uh for uh streets, and that the uh properties shall have that minimum lot width within their zoning district. Easements may be required, but then we get down here to the review process. Shall be submitted to the zoning administrator, reviewed by the city engineer, utilities, and other city staff. It's only uh if, well, it would be given approval or denial in writing, um, and then go to the county recorder. Uh, if, uh particularly if it was denied, uh what is the appeal process where it can go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to be reviewed? And so then, the next section is the minor subdivision, uh talks about where it can be applied. Here, we're actually going to expect a certain kind of exhibits to show that information, uh the criteria that is evaluated, um, and, and uh the process is kind of up in the procedure at the top. It just uh goes straight to the City Council for final action. Commissioner Lutz, does that uh address those two areas?
Yes, it does, thank you. My, my concern, Holly, is that, uh, I wouldn't have a concern in the example you gave as far as combining properties as Mr. Hovland did, but in an example where, say, Mr. Hovland had a couple of extra acres there by him, and he wanted to, it was now platted as a single lot, he wanted to split that in, say, five new lots and develop it. I mean, he needs, he needs a public hearing, and his neighbors have to be notified by mail, and they get a chance to speak up on it if they want, if he wants to build a structure, but there would be no public hearing or opportunity for the neighbors to voice in if he was going to develop the property and add, say, five more homes in there. Well, I find that a little disconcerting that the citizens that neighbor the property wouldn't even have a voice, and there'd be no public hearing or no notification to them, they would just find out that someone who, I mean, another area would be like Austin Acres, someone who had a large lot could, could split that up then and develop it, and the neighbors wouldn't have anything to say about it.
Um, well, we would still have.
Am I understanding it right?
Well, we would still have input on how that property is um subdivided as a city. But from what, yeah.
Right, I realize you would, you would have to approve that, I understand that, but there would not be, if you approved it, then it's a done deal, right? There would be no public hearing and no notification to the neighbors or anything.
So, um, for the administrative lot split, that's correct. For the minor subdivision, um, the, the subdivision statute uh requires a hearing, but the council can choose to conduct the hearing itself. And so, for the minor subdivision, um, as written, um, it takes advantage of what the, the state statute um states that um the City Council uh can review and approve a subdivision. In the case of a plat, um, that is uh where the council chooses to, to have that public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. Um, it's, it's kind of an oddity of the difference between uh state statutes for zoning and subdivision. Plats are actually required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, but the council can determine who conducts a public hearing, often because all zoning matters, uh the public hearings in front of the Planning Commission, plats are commonly in front of the Planning Commission. It's, it's that uh section that when it's five or less lots, um, the city, specifically the City Council, can choose to do a um less uh, a, a lower review standard, so.
I think, Eric, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think.
Yep.
There are communities that even though they have this option, they could determine that it should still be platted because there's a certain amount of infrastructure that's needed, um, so they, we as a city could say, um, yeah, it's less than five lots, but we still think it should be platted because it needs certain types of infrastructure.
And that's uh really getting into uh, in criteria C there, criteria two, three, and four, if uh the City Council, uh obviously after staff's recommendation, um, you know, believes that uh that, that construction of utilities and the public right-of-way require uh that plating, if there's issues that would impair access or um violate any other regulations, or more specifically here, it's probably plans and policies. Uh, Holly's correct that um just because it's five or less lots doesn't mean it automatically qualifies for a minor subdivision. This is usually where there's uh either, you know, two stub roads that it can be connected uh through the minor subdivision, or there's already some level of improvements, but if uh significant improvements are needed, easements beyond kind of the public right-of-way, uh public property, specifically parks are included, uh then generally that would get kicked to uh requiring a plat and preliminary uh final plat, um regardless of whether it's five or fewer lots. So, yes, these are, these are kind of um lesser options, but if uh the impact to the land division is uh so great that um the dedication and improvement requirements of the plating process are needed, um, they could end up going through a plat even if they're less than five lots.
Okay, I, I understand, I understand that the city would still have control on the property. That's not my concern, is that the city doesn't have control over the property owner. And I understand the value for Holly and her staff to have a streamlined, uh administrative way to do some of these things, to make them a little more streamlined. My concern is a situation where we're undercutting the neighboring property owner's ability to have that public hearing to make their voices heard. That's where my concern is, not the city's control, but the.
Yep.
The public hearing piece.
Uh, that certainly is, is uh your, you know, why we're bringing this ordinance to you, uh if you, you know, b- believe that's a, a requirement that the City Council should consider, uh I would ask uh or suggest that you, you add that to a condition of, of your recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Did anyone else have any other questions?
Um, you know, I was just gonna add, I was trying to think of instances, maybe Craig Byram, you could help me here, but I'm trying to think of instances, instances where we've had what would qualify as minor subdivisions generally. We've been using that process. We only have that option right now in our zoning code, so we've been doing that for all of the splits and combinations that people are requesting in the community, and oftentimes they're in neighborhoods where they are not changing the lots at all, the infrastructure already exists, they're just moving the property line like Eric had talked about earlier. So, we've just been looking for a process where um, you know, we're trying to, trying to not create a lot of um hurdles for people to be able to do things that should be simple, um but yet also try to make sure that we do um uh take all of the important things into consideration, like the neighborhood and um, you know, and the property uh uses and uh things along those lines. Um, I think the only property that wasn't actually uh, um, it didn't have existing boundaries was maybe one out by the Country Club that I think Hormel Corporation had purchased, so that was the only example I can think of of, one where maybe we would have required a plat, um that was, but it was just one parcel, and it was just a few acres. Um, but yeah, it's not a real common thing that I think that we would see, but um, but yeah, that's all I had to add.
This is uh Craig Byram. I would add only that what I think would qualify under this proposed language as an administrative lot split has been occurring in Austin since the beginning of zoning without any oversight and without any active participation by the city. People having large lots deciding to sell part of their lot so that someone else can build a house, and the only time that that would have raised flags or gotten on anybody's radar is when building permits are issued, and there would have been a review of whether the minimum lot frontage existed, buildable space, setbacks, those kinds of things could be respected. Recently, within the last six months, the city established a new ordinance that uh allowed for the county to flag these sorts of things and send them back to Holly's office for review, and so that was the first step forward in establishing any real. And so that was the first step forward in establishing any real process for these simple, I have a big lot and I'm going to divide it into two lots sort of scenarios. So I don't want anyone to have the impression that there's been a public hearing, notice to the neighbors, the seeking of neighbor input on decisions where someone owns a large lot and they decide to cut it into two lots and sell part of it so that someone can build another house. What I see is that this new proposal would add a defined structure, a description of what city administrative staff would look at, a sort of warning or early notice that those sorts of things are happening, so that some upfront and additional efforts can be put into making sure that the two resulting lots do comply with all of our minimum lot sizes, minimum frontages, those sorts of things. So I don't think that we're backing up or taking away options for citizen input. I think we are adding more defined set of administrative processes for the simple decisions. I would say that in the past, if there was a division of land that was going to implicate any infrastructure, roads, traffic patterns, parklands, those sorts of things, we had a minor subdivision process for doing that if there wasn't much impact, and that could streamline and went to the council for hearing and public input. Or if it made for significant infrastructure concerns, it went through a full plating process that came to the planning commission multiple times, and then to the city council for final approval. So it was always a situation where the more impactful the proposal was, the more process and citizen input there was. So I think what's being proposed is certainly a significant step forward. It does what the law requires. If there is a political appetite, either by this body or ultimately the city council, to add additional public hearings and opportunities for neighbors to be heard, certainly we can provide more hearings and opportunities to the public than the law requires, but this proposal meets all legal requirements as they stand and is better than what we've always had in the past.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Any comments? If not, are we in a place to entertain a motion?
Holly, or Chair, even though I don't think anybody's here, we do technically need a public hearing, so I think we do need to open and close it, even if nobody actually speaks.
Thank you. Can you just, no, can you just ask if any of the members, if any of the public is present, and if so, does anybody have any comments?
Okay. Do we have any members of the public present, and does anyone have any questions or feedback regarding the motion?
There does not appear to be anybody present other than city staff. And nobody else on Zoom that I am aware of. Do you want to just go ahead?
What exactly are we, I was going to ask, what exactly are we making a motion for?
A recommendation to council to adopt the new ordinance as presented. Eric, does that seem sufficient? Can it be simple?
Yes, that is sufficient. We, we've prepared a draft resolution to our draft ordinance, the city council that simply says to adopt the Unified Development Code. So I think ordinance is prepared, is fine to carry that for.
Well, I move that the planning commission recommends to city council to adopt the unified plan as presented. This is Commissioner Stewart.
Do we have a second?
I second that, Commissioner Burrows.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to recommend to council the ordinance presented to us as prepared. We'll go ahead and we'll do a vote. Commissioner Lutz?
Nay.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
With a majority vote, motion carries.
All right, thank you. That recommendation to council will be presented next Tuesday at 5:30. Same location.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I just have one item to add. Normally, Eric, and you're done, you don't have to stay if you are ready to go, we normally appoint a new chair and co-chair in January. I think Melissa would like to take a, you know, a break from the chair position. If anyone's interested in taking the chair position, let me know. We won't do it until the next meeting, but we would need a chair and a co-chair. And I can send out an email to the other commissioners who aren't present tonight. But just think about that, and then let me know if you have any interest. And, you know, you really don't have to be perfect. You know, all of us take a little, little while to warm up to it, whatever it might be. And I know we got a lot of new people here that have been on Zoom for the most part. I think, do we still, I'm asking Mr. Byram, do we still have a requirement that the chair be present at the meeting in person?
Boy, I'd have to look back at the statute. There's a requirement that the, that the chair be present or one member of the board, but I think, I think in this scenario, it is the chair.
Okay, but we can, we'll verify that, and I'll just send it out.
At the council, I think it's either the mayor or the city administrator, but I think in this environment, it would be the chair.
Yeah, so right now, I guess that makes it a little more of a commitment. But yeah, I'll send that information out, but just something to think about, and if you're ready to adjourn, please go ahead.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Seconded by Commissioner Stewart.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burrows, seconded by Commissioner Stewart to adjourn. Go ahead and do a vote. Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Clunner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
My hesitation, I can't remember if I also told that to my...
Oh, that would be nice.
That's what I'm looking at.
Well, that would be helpful, just to get more people willing to do it maybe, but thank you for making that point. I completely forgot about that, really, that...